All right. Good morning, everybody. It's 8:30. We'll call this morning this meeting to order for Tuesday, June 22nd. And the first item will be the approval of the agenda.
I'll move second.
A motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. We'll move into citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? No online?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Colley. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Approval of minutes from June 8th, 2021.
Move to approve minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Colley, second by Commissioner Abinger. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carried. We have the approval of the Board of Appeal and Equalization minutes from June 15th, 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Our 8:35 item is the COVID-19 update. Public Health Director Kathy McKay. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I handed out the report on our data. So you can see the cumulative cases total in Clay County, 8,265, and in Minnesota, over 604,000. Deaths are at 92 in Clay County, Minnesota, 7,549. And then we have the out-of-isolation number, which gives us active cases, and it's only 15. So our number of cases have clearly been declining, which is great. In Minnesota, it's 982. So you can see the Clay County cases per week, the graph at the bottom. And, you know, we had the peak in March, and then we've since declined. So that's a really, really good that we're still on the decline. And the 14-day case rate is at a low of 5.89. The active cases, we have four cases in that 30 to 34 age range, and otherwise, it's kind of scattered throughout the ages. And you see mostly it's the younger population. Cumulative cases, the highest was in the 20 to 24 range. And then in the 30 to 34 is the next range. So the cases also are affecting the younger group. Our vaccine distribution, so Clay County's data is people with one vaccine dose is at 54.9%. So almost 29,000. Now, just keep in mind, and we've mentioned this before, that we do not have the data from the pharmacies in North Dakota. So we know that this is low compared to what the real number would be, but there's just no accuracy without that pharmacy data. And so those with completed vaccine is 51.4% or over 27,000 with a completed vaccine series. And then it gives the people with at least one dose, kind of the age range breakout there. And then the people with the completed series, and you see the highest number is that 18 to 49 range. And statewide, we're at 64.4% with one vaccine dose and at 60.2 with a completed series. So what we say is we're closer to the state range than we are with our data that's incomplete because of the pharmacies. And again, that's the same age group, 18 to 49, with the highest number of vaccine doses and completed series. The goal was to get to 70%, which is our low percentage for herd immunity by July 1st. And it looks like that's going to be a challenge to get to that percentage, which is really unfortunate. So we still have a lot of people that we are hoping will avail themselves to vaccines. We're still providing vaccine through our public health site, and that's in the Family Service Center building. It's our clinic site. And so we're doing weekly opportunities for people to get the vaccine. We're also providing vaccine to the correctional facility and the juvenile detention center, those that are homebound. We've reached out to Head Start. And let's see, who else? The schools. We've reached out to all the K-12 schools. So we're really kind of trying to do a wide sweep and provide to those that we think we can reach. On the week of June 13th, there was only 42 doses. We are taking walk-ins. We are getting some walk-ins with first, that are needing first doses. So that's a good thing. But we're still, we're still going to provide vaccine this week. It's going to be Wednesday, Thursday again. So there's still plenty of opportunities. We also, we're offering the walk-in, so people just, there's no barriers, and they can come in, get your vaccine. You can register right when you're there. So it's at the Family Service Center building in Suite 105. So we're really encouraging people to take advantage. We still have all the three types of vaccine, Moderna, Johnson &amp; Johnson, and Pfizer. So, you know, there's an opportunity to get the vaccine. And so we're really hoping people take advantage of that. You've probably heard, you know, of the new variant strain. And we're going to see variant strains. There's a lot of them, COVID variant strains. The newest one is the Delta strain. And as long as we are not reaching herd immunity, and there's still a lot of unvaccinated people, this virus is going to mutate, and that's what viruses do. So this new strain is a mutation of the original virus. And so they're really, the scientists and epidemiologists are really watching this new strain, as they do with all of those. The predominant strain in Minnesota is the B.1.1.7. That's about 90% of what they're seeing in Minnesota as the variant strain that's the highest. And then we're seeing B.1.4.2.7. And in Clay County, we do have somewhat over 100 cases of the B.1.1.7, so the most common one. And then we have around 40 of the B.1.4.2.7, and then the B.1.5.2.6. We have around 20. So we're seeing the strain in Minnesota. And again, they don't sequence all of those. So, you know, those are rounding numbers. They're not exact. But they've seen clusters of the variant strains in those that are not vaccinated, mostly. So in the variant strain, the Delta variant strain, they're seeing, that's the highest percentage that they're seeing for hospitalizations now. The hospitalizations are still not, you know, they're not ramping up, but the ones that is causing hospitalizations is this new Delta variant. So the real push is that if we can get, continue to get people vaccinated, it's not too late. We'd really like to see more people come in and get their vaccinations. And so we would eliminate pockets of unvaccinated people that could be susceptible to this. And remember, the strains sometimes cause more severe illness. So, you know, we're really trying to lower that number of people, again, that would be hospitalized and severe, have severe illness that are infected with that. So they're seeing pockets of people that aren't vaccinated and are gathering at community events. And that's where potentially we'll see some outbreaks. So we have lots of opportunities, not only through public health, but various other healthcare facilities and pharmacies. So we're really encouraging to people to still get your vaccine. We have vaccine available, and it's a good way to protect you and others around you by getting the vaccine. We still don't have any vaccine for kids under five. So those are still, you know, they're working on those vaccines, but there isn't a vaccine for those individuals. Any questions? I know I went through that pretty fast. Any questions on the vaccinations or the variant strain?
Commissioner Abinger.
Yes, Kathy, on the walk-in clinics that we're conducting, those are available for kids 12 and up as well, as long as they have their parents with them.
That's correct. And 12 to 17, they need parental consent. So we would have those available. And parents can come in, or we've also offered, if they can get the consent ahead of time, we accept that. Correct.
Follow-up to that. So your, the hours of operation for your, at the Family Service Center is what?
So Wednesday, tomorrow, we're open from 1 to 5. And then on Thursday, we're open from 9 to 1. So we're trying to give people the opportunities to, you know, have any time of the day. But we also get requests. So we're getting homebound people that, of course, can't make it in. And we're setting some separate ones for Head Start and the schools. So, but those are operations this week, and we change those depending on the requests we get.
And those, obviously, those, there's no cost to them to get the shot, right?
That is correct. There is no cost.
What about folks that might have employment where they're working from 8 to 5? Is there any opportunity for them to schedule something?
Yes.
Outside of those hours?
We have reached out in the past to employers and offered it at their site. Some have taken advantage of that, but we're still doing that. We're also going to reach out to churches, and we'll offer those vaccines at churches if they want us to come to their church and get the vaccine at the site. So we're giving plenty of opportunities out there for people to, so just call our office. We're happy to set things up for businesses. And then the vault testing site, the vault testing site is still operational. We haven't heard when they will demobilize, but it's still operational now. We just have, their latest data is just a week of June 6th is the latest data. I should get more today for the June 13th week. So the number of tests is 230. So you see, really, it's kind of been in 2 to 3 to 100 at those testing sites. There's 10 testing sites across the state. Morehead is one of them. But we're still getting some people that are doing the testing, both in Minnesota and in North Dakota. North Dakota individuals can come here for, and the testing is free. They ask for your insurance information if you want to provide it, and then they can build the insurance. But there's no out-of-cost, out-of-pocket cost to the individuals.
Seems every day on social media, I see somebody asking where they can get a rapid test. Do we, we don't do rapid tests ourselves, right?
Correct. We do not do the rapid tests. Some of the healthcare facilities might, you know, it's great for certain circumstances, but it's not as accurate as the PCR test, which is done at the vault testing site. So, and the turnaround time is pretty efficient, couple of days for the turnaround test. So there's, there might be some circumstances where you need a rapid test, but the healthcare facilities can provide those.
I think you need a rapid test.
I'm going to travel. I need a rapid test. And the drugstore is going to give it to me.
Okay.
Through the drive-thru, which is going to be, that's going to be an experience Wednesday.
Well, good luck.
Any other questions for Kathy? All right, thank you, Kathy.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item is a request to waive penalty for G. Malek for late payment of taxes. Michelle, good morning.
Good morning.
And we do have information in our packet that describes the situation.
That memo came with the payment, so I called and talked to Georgia's daughter, Chris, and then she said she would be available to be on the phone. So I think, I believe Chris is with us today?
Yes, I'm on Zoom, yeah.
Yep. So she's requesting to have the penalty waived, and the request does fall within the county guidelines. So.
Yeah, I want to start off by giving our condolences for the death in your family. And this certainly meets the requirements of waiver of penalty, and I would certainly support a motion to do so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to waive the penalty. I believe the amount is 176.64.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Colley. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Those penalties are waived.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. All right. Next, we have an update on financial documents from 2020 and 20, or May, January through May of 2021. Stephen Laurie, and this we tabled from last week. So if we can have a motion to take it off the table, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Okay. Good morning, Stephen Laurie.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
By the way, I, before we start, I read on social media, and social media is always correct, but I understand somebody has a birthday today.
I do.
Yeah, you do. Okay. Well, happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
What a birthday present.
All right.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, before you this morning, you do have a number of documents. Recently, the Board asked just for an update as we move to finalize entries for 2020 and also look at 2021. First two documents that I'm going to have you take a peek at, or that will go off, are these two documents. 2020 is listed on the top. It identifies our revenues and expenditures by department. Historically, as a Board, we've talked about the departments that are in that 111% or higher or significantly lower as far as revenues or expenses. And so if I could touch base first on the left side of your page, there on the revenue side, the public, the law library had, saw revenue decrease of 55%. That, of course, could be attributed to the fact that we were, closed a significant portion of the year for the law library. I also believe we didn't have a law librarian for a portion of the year.
Correct. Both those are correct.
And so that impacted our bottom line there. Both our auditor treasure, Laurie, can maybe touch on those, were 149% and 204% revenues.
Yeah, for the, for the interest, basically, it's just a timing issue. We can't recognize any interest until we actually, until we receive it. And so it was actually earned in prior years, but we didn't receive it until 2020. And then for the election piece, we had actually two grants, a CARES grant and an equipment grant, so.
All right. And in addition to that, if you look under Technology Services, we had an increase of revenues of 238%. Again, that can be attributed to CARES funding that was provided to that department. The Recorder's Office, again, had 134%. We, again, had funding that went to the Recorder's Office from the CARES area. The grounds, grounds and building had to do with CARES and rent.
Correct.
Rental properties. The, down on the emergency management, again, that's where our CARES funding showed, shows up there. So we had an increase of 25,115%. And so we had the CARES business relief in that section. So in, when we have, look at total revenues in these departments, we had about 131%. And when you look at taking away the CARES funding, we were within about, less than a million dollars of additional revenue in that area. If we take a look over on the expense side of the document, going down to Information, Information Services, again, we had 110% spending there. That, again, can be attributed to the CARES, CARES funding that we utilized in that area. Elections, again, Laurie, we only have elections every couple of years, but Laurie provides funding each year for that, and so we don't have a spike when the elections happen. And so we had an increase there. Is there anything else that would attribute that? Okay. The Recorder's Office had expenditures. That's where we had the digitization of a number of the documents through the CARES program. If we, we go down to the medical examiner, unfortunately, we had a number of, higher number of deaths than what was anticipated. And so we saw an increase in that area. The juvenile facility had, had a little higher expenses. Again, that had to do with overtime for workers and also some COVID testing that had to take place. It wasn't covered by, for some of the residents and staff. Again, emergency management was high. We had, that's where our CARES funding is showing up. Down on the bottom portion, we have West Central Initiative was at 200%. That was just a, simply documentation or entry situation where both of our payments for 2019 and '20 were realized in 2020. And so we had an expense overall of about 122% above what was anticipated. Again, that can be attributed to the expenses that we utilized through the CARES program. On the second page of that document, Road and Bridge Social Services, really not anything too out of line. The Road and Bridge had a number of, had one, I guess, entry, particularly of about $2 million that would offset some of those, some of the shortfalls.
Yeah, again, that has to do with the timing of the revenues. We've actually made the expenses related to those projects, but we haven't received the money in, and we're not allowed to recognize that until, until it comes in. So, and that, that is about $2 million.
And so when we look at, look at Social Services, we just had additional revenues or fees that were collected in income maintenance. As a juvenile, the juvenile facility had 125% of their budget in revenues. That can be attributed to outside of our member usage. We are part of an 11-county member, a member JPA, but with the, with the additional beds, we do utilize those beds for other counties outside of our membership if they're available. And we saw quite an increase in those revenues this year. The, if we go down to landfill, again, we had 114% in the existing landfill. We just had more landfill fees that were, that were collected in that area. And Central Services and Family Service Center, we had 115%. We attribute that to rental?
Yes, correct.
And so again, in that, in that portion, we were, we are, I think that kind of hits the highlights of the main thing. Any questions on any of the revenues on either of the two pages?
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. First off, I just want to thank the Commission for tabling this item from last week. My question is on the soil conservation appropriations. Can you tell me why the expenditures were only 71% was, are we?
I believe it would be due to the timing of some grants that came in.
Okay.
Some, the grants are also budgeted as well as their allocation.
Okay.
It just has to matter of when we get those and when.
Okay. All right. And then that, then on the revenue side, is that?
That'd be, so we didn't get the revenue, so we didn't pay it out.
Thank you.
I have a similar question on solid waste. On the expenditure side, why are we seeing such low percentages for, like, solid waste at 64%, composting 23%, existing landfill, or household house waste 75%, existing landfill 51, and the year's completed? Why, why would we have such low?
The solid waste, I'm not so sure on those, but the existing landfill typically he budgets for some capital projects. And that's what, what that would be, is he budgeted for that, but we didn't do whatever it was he budgeted for in there. The other ones, I'm not really sure what the difference would be in solid waste.
Okay. Well, we can have more discussions on that coming up, I guess. But Laurie, I wanted to ask you, so these, the revenue line items, you've attributed the CARES dollars that we appropriated to each entity. They're included into their revenue line item?
Correct. We, initially, it was receipted into the general fund, but as part of our audit, the state auditor said we had to allocate those to the correct funds.
Okay. And so all of those areas where we, where we put those revenues for them, we also then see expenditures higher.
Right.
Because those had to be, they were specified to a certain expense.
Correct.
Correct? And so those expenses are also, basically, the revenues and expenditures for the CARES items match within those line items. I guess the, the problem that we could have moving forward is when we do our comparatives.
Right. And so we'll have to.
Are you going to be able to pull those?
In my spreadsheet that I do, I'll have to account for that.
Okay. You'll be, can you kind of pull those out for us to be able to tell how, how it would have been without the CARES revenue and expenses?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. I know, I think it's going to happen in Rhonda's budget and everybody's budget. There's going to be.
I'll just, I'll just add a column, and I'll just deduct all the CARES dollars, both in revenues and expenses.
Okay. Because we're going to have some of it for 2020, and we're going to have some of it 2021. And so when we do our 2022 budget, it can, it can be confusing if we don't have the ability to.
Yep, I can definitely do that.
Understand. Okay.
Yeah, Commissioner Mojo.
I may have missed it. I apologize as if I did. But the debt retirement on the joint highway facility expenditures is only at 53%. Can you highlight why that would be?
I'll have to check on that. I don't know.
And the reason I ask, I know as we are talking about some capital improvement pieces, I thought there was a big-ticket item out at that joint highway facility, and curious about that, if we're seeing only 53% utilization.
Yeah, and actually, those bonds are paid off right now. So we've only got one bond payment that isn't, that isn't related to ditches.
Okay.
We've got one bond payment next year left. That's it.
Other than the LEC and?
Yeah, other than the jail and LEC.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Do you want to move into 2021, or?
And we could just touch base if you, the larger document, we do have the statement of revenues and fund balances, changes from year end. And so if we just go category by category quickly, the general fund saw revenues over expenditures of $2,012,900. Again, just some bigger ticket items, we saw savings of, in staffing at the correctional facility and meals of roughly $300,000. The attorney's office saw savings of about $100,000 in there. Of course, we didn't utilize our fleets. We didn't use our travel budgets last year. And so that had a pretty, a pretty large impact also in the general fund area. The road and bridge area, we've touched on that. It shows a deficit of 1.9 million, which is actually about a break even.
Yeah, it'll, once we recognize those revenues, that'll be a wash.
Social Services saw a revenues over expenditures of $307,609. The building fund had revenues over expenditures of $51,770. Public Health had revenues over expenditures of $607,64. They had been running a deficit, and that's basically based off of journal entries for PERA retirement requirement that we have. Solid Waste actually shows a revenues over expenditures of $286,083, but we have an outstanding.
Yeah, we have about a $500,000 closure, post-closure journal entry we need to make yet. And so they'll actually show a deficit of about $250,000.
The Family Service Center shows a expenses over the revenues of $159,622. The juvenile facility, which includes NOSCARE, correct, had, had revenues over expenditures of $1,888,874. Again, juvenile centers, enterprise fund. Internal Service had revenues over expenditures of $685,585. And then Debt Services had revenues over expenditures of $2,315,719 for a, for total fund balance adjustment of $5,149,923. So, and again, there are, the juvenile facility would be outside of, outside of the levy on that, that piece.
Yeah, that, the juvenile center, that million dollars that, that belongs to.
Yeah, that, the juvenile center, that million dollars that, that belongs to all, is, is that, is that all secure or is there some non?
There is some non-secure within that.
The portion that's secure would be basically revenues over expenditures for the facility for the 11 member counties. Yeah. Lori, last year in CARES dollars, we were, we were able to reimburse ourselves some dollars. Did, so that, that reimbursement is not all in the general fund, right? The 2 minutes, well, that's spread across each, each area?
Yep. Public health got probably the biggest majority of it.
Right.
But Road and Bridge got a little bit.
So that public health number of 600,000, that's very likely to be because there was reimbursement for CARES.
Exactly. Yes.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure we're all going to follow this as we move forward and, and know what funds we have available and what we need to reserve, so. Okay, Steve, unless there's other questions, you can.
Okay.
Continue on.
And like to switch over to, to the 2021 document of, of revenues and expenditures by department. Again, just highlighting some of the areas that, that are high again are low. Auditor wise, we had, we had, in the revenues have 364,499 through roughly 42% of the year. That's a 422 dollar, or 422% increase. And Lori, I don't know if you want to touch on that?
Yeah, it's mortgage registration and state deed tax. We collect 100%, but we have to pay 80% back out. And we haven't paid that out. That's on an ongoing monthly basis. And so when this was when that payment hadn't been made yet.
And then in down, I guess we go down to emergency management. Again, that shows 6,237,168. That is the American Rescue Funds that, that we have secured earlier, earlier this past month. And so from a revenue standpoint, I think generally we're, we're a little bit behind in collections there, but there's nothing, as we went through, through here, that, that stood out as a, as an issue.
So that, that's the, that's the first payment on this new American recovers?
Yep, the first half.
First half.
Right.
Just to clarify that we, that just came in in the last couple, three weeks?
Yeah.
But this is budgets through May?
Through the end of May.
Okay. All right. I thought it was March. Thank you.
And so unless there are any other questions on, on the revenues side, and move over to the expenditures, I think probably the one that stands out maybe is the grounds and building. In addition to the additional, to the cost, we have some of the expenses of the government center that show up in that, in that portion. And then down again to emergency management, it shows some of the CARES, CARES funding that was spent, and also I think with our business relief program that we received funds for towards the end of, of 2020, but were, were realized in 2021. So, and, and a lot of the other appropriations on the bottom that are 100%, a lot of those are just one-time payments that, that we make from our budget. And so as Lori and I went through the expenses, again, we're about 42% through the year. And it shows us at right around that 40%, 40% range. So are there any, any additional questions on revenues or expenditures for 2021?
So we're looking at, starting to see departments in July?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Colleen has sent out the requests and right after, after the 4th of July, Lori and I will begin meeting with, with the department heads going line by line through the budgets and, and then those, the following week generally they will, they will come before this board for, for their presentations.
All right. Any other questions? Anything else, Lori?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. We have with us today our new FM Chamber CEO, Shannon. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to our Clay County Board Meeting.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. Just a very quick introduction of myself. I wanted to reach out to all of you and to our administrator and say, it's a great pleasure to be here in this region. I've had the great pleasure of leading a Chamber of Commerce for 21 years in five different states and have learned a lot around the, the types of communities that are vibrant and thriving. And this is a region that we're really excited to be here. So my husband and I and two children, eight-year-old and a five-year-old, moved in November. Yes, in the middle of a pandemic. Who moves in the middle of a pandemic? Apparently we do. But we came here to, because of numerous reasons. One, the vibrancy of this, this community, the growth, the prosperity and the, what I would call a significant upward trajectory is really exciting to us. I also did a lot of research on just how the community functions and the region. And, and one thing that I found is there is a significant amount of collaboration and public-private partnership. And so that was very exciting to me. I'm coming most recently out of the Twin Cities marketplace, so have a lot of familiarity with the Minnesota Legislature, some of the challenges that are happening in the Twin Cities marketplace. But I will tell you, we're really happy to be here in, in a much smaller community, but one that has a lot of vibrancy for it. So I wanted to share with you just a little bit of philosophies for me. As we go forward with the Chamber of Commerce, we have about 2,000 members, of which about 71% of those are 15 employees or less. So it is significantly a small business type of an organization. But I believe very strongly in public-private partnerships. So I've been doing these types of outreaches to all of our cities and our counties, also looking at our, working with our school districts. So I already sit on the Morehead Career Academy Committee, so looking at how we can advance those efforts around talent and workforce, future talent pipeline is going to be an important one that I'll talk about in just a minute. But we're also looking at how do we help our businesses grow and prosper? So really, our mission now has been much more narrow focused around growth and prosperity and being a catalyst for that business growth. But also we want to be able to help individuals grow and communities grow and prosper as well. So hope that you see us as a partner in the future. The Clay County is a very important partner with us. As we, as I mentioned, the Career Academy will be a big part of it. I'm also very, I've been already meeting and figuring out how we can partner with downtown Morehead, Inc. and the Morehead Business Association better. We have assets that we could bring to the table and help to strengthen their mission, but also at the end of the day, we all want the same thing, a thriving, vibrant community. And so just a couple of things, I just want to share with you the, the four cornerstones that the chamber will focus on now in, into the future, some of which we've done for quite some time. Katie, Katie Mastel, our VP of Public Policy is here with me today. So public policy and advocacy is a big one for us. It's something that the chamber has a strong reputation in. We are committed to strengthening that even further. We've hired an actual lobbying firm to help us keep our finger on the pulse of what's happening in St. Paul, as well as in Bismarck and at the federal level. So we've got both the relationship side of it, but also just the intel. As we look to what are opportunities for greater Minnesota communities to, to prosper, we want to make sure we take full advantage of that, including some of these American Rescue Funds and additional opportunities for funding coming out of the state government. So we also have, our second cornerstone will be talent and workforce. One thing that I did coming in, I've been here now since started December 1st, so I've had over, just over 200 face-to-face meetings with businesses. And their number one issue, as you see in all the headlines, is talent and workforce, that inability to attract and retain talent. So we're really looking at how do we have a multi-pronged approach to talent? So we'll look at public-private partnerships that address future talent pipelines. So what can we do with our K-12 schools and then all five of our universities in the, in the region to strengthen the future talent pipeline, but are also our immediate talent pipeline? We still have a tremendous amount of opportunity in some of our hidden talent pools. So those being recently released incarcerated, disabled populations, new Americans, immigrant populations, those are all areas that we'll be working with the existing organizations, so of which I know the county's got significant relationships and partnerships in that realm, as well as our nonprofits that work with these sectors. How can we help them to strengthen that work and get them connected directly with the businesses? So you'll get an outreach from me on an individual basis on a new talent and workforce strategy that we want to launch for the region, that I'd love to share a little bit more with you on an individual basis, just for time's sake. The third cornerstone is obviously our business growth and excellence side of that. That's where all of our training programs, all of the support that we give to our businesses, helping with connections, building their business, those are going to be tremendously important for us going forward as well. We're doing, I'm doing individual visioning sessions right now with each of the committees and the departments. So for instance, just had leadership. I know Jenny's been very integral in helping our leadership class, so our leadership program is a very strong program. So we're doing individual visioning sessions so that we can focus on how do we get better, do more? So excellence is, is a big piece of this, but also efficiencies and effectiveness. So really being able, able to leverage relationships and resources to stretch them even further. And then the final piece is community development. As you're all probably aware, we, we do numerous community types of events. Our Military Affairs Committee is a very active one. We have Military Appreciation Event at the Red Hacks coming up soon. Those are just a few examples of some of the things that we're wanting to do. But I just wanted to say hello, first of all, to all of you, how, what a great honor it is to be here. I really do look forward to working with each of you. And if you need anything at all, please reach out. I did leave my card, so you'll have a way to contact me, but thank you for your time, Mr. Commissioner.
Well, thank you, Shannon, and.
Oh, if you have any questions.
Yeah, I, I just want to thank you for being here and it's nice to meet you. I, I do, you know, we as a county are always interested in, in economic development too, and the, the chamber obviously plays a role in any economic development that goes on. We share some concerns right now regarding the labor market. It's extremely sensitive and it's critical even for our operation where that's going. And you mentioned your membership and how many of them have 15 and fewer employees. And a lot of those places maybe having to even adjust their hours of operation for lack of help. And so we have a, we have a lot of work to do to see how we can improve and gain on that. And I, you know, I, we certainly would look to the chamber to help us with ideas on ways we can do a public-private partnership and, and ways to make sure that we can stabilize our workforce.
Right.
Because it's, we got a long way to go.
We do. And it's, and unfortunately, it's not going to get any better, right? We, we have the new numbers of the birth rates, we have the new numbers of the graduates coming out of the colleges. And so we, yeah, we are going to, we're going to face some challenges. Not to mention, I, I think the other part of this is, on the economic development side is what is our attraction strategy to bring talent to this region? So one of the things I, I've mentioned to many is I've spent over half my career in the Minneapolis region and have never been to this region until I was looking at the job. There's something wrong with that, right? We should, we should have a brand in a region that's as dynamic as this, a, a strong brand that represents that. So that's another thing that we'll be looking at really diving into with economic development partners to say, how do we better demonstrate not our tourism brand, but really our quality of life brand to bring more workforce here to the region as well?
And I, I know you were referred to this as the FM Chamber and your, your members are typically Fargo and Morehead, but I would certainly encourage you to reach out to people like Karen Lauer and those like from Barnesville and Holly and those types of areas as well that, that can, you know, growth for them is, is, means workforce for the Fargo-Moore area too, so.
It does. Yeah. In fact, we're, it, it's really exciting, this new workforce strategy, and you'll hear a lot about this. It's called Ignite. I won't take too much time now, but it is going to be available and an opportunity for all of the school districts. So for, you know, everything from DGF to Morehead, but also we'd love to reach out to those communities, those cities, as well as the businesses in those areas. You'll, when you get a little more glimpse of this, it's a combination of a relationship software and management system with a technology that actually creates more connectivity in a seamless fashion. So it allows for individual companies and individuals to say, I'd be willing to speak in a classroom, job shadow, internship, mentorship. And it streamlines that all so that we could have more exploration opportunities for our students, but also our active job seekers. So more to come on that.
Excellent. Any other?
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. Next, we have our, we're going to meet our new Regional Director of Extension, and I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Mojo for an introduction.
Thank you, Commissioner. As, as you know, Morehead is fortunate to have the Regional Extension Office here, and I think that we're very fortunate because there's only a handful of those offices throughout the state, and they really do offer a wide breadth of informational services and opportunities for our residents. I was also fortunate to serve on the interview panel for the replacement of the Regional Director and am so excited to extend a warm welcome from the Clay County Board to Cecilia Amadou, who is our new Regional Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Amadou, for that great introduction. And I had a pleasure meeting you and Commissioner Kaylee at our Extension Committee meeting, and it's a pleasure. Thank you, Colleen, for letting this happen. As I'm currently standing on Iowa land and coming to you from Iowa, Waterloo, and just as Shannon shared with you all, I'm just really excited to be joining this region. I originally served in the Nobos County Region as a statewide health improvement partnership coordinator. And obviously, there's a wide range of distance between those two different regions, but there's some similarities that I think really makes me so excited to be here. I have a three-year-old son and my son, my husband just finished his pharmacy residency. So we're both all going into transition and just really excited to be joining you all in your region. I also, like Shannon said, really love the vibrant community and really enjoy hearing what Shannon has. Sounds like I need to make a connection with Shannon as well to really learn about the opportunities that they've got coming in, in the region and how extension can play a part in that. Um, you know, this is my, what, seventh month with extension, but this, in this role, this is my third week. So I haven't had a chance to really bring to you a vision of what I see the region looking like, but that's something that I will be coming back and presenting to you all with my ideas and vision for the region. One thing that I do know is important is our 4-H initiative. And like Shannon said, we, we want to bring people into our region, but I'm really curious to know how we can keep our young families and young kids in the region instead of moving them out. So definitely have some interest in that and can connect with you all and Shannon to see how we can really keep people in the region versus after college, we see that people move out and how can we really do a better job keeping people there? Also, as you can see, your community is thriving. We have a lot of new immigrants that are coming into the community. So how can we really pull those individuals into 4-H? We have families that maybe farmers in their native country, but when they move to America, they don't have the opportunity to own farms. So how can we really partner with farmers and really bring those communities into that 4-H aspect, because we know 4-H really develop leaders? And we want to make sure that people in our community can really tap into that and bring that leadership opportunity in farming, in, in whatever areas that we see fit. I'm committed to community and relationship. That's the reason why I took this role, and I really hope we can connect and really develop some really cool projects in our region that will really attract people like Shannon said. When I was doing my research about the area, yeah, it was very hard to figure out what the community is like, but I know by talking to people locally that it's a nice community to be part of for young family. And we need to, but we need to do a better job sharing that so it's attracting young families as well. So that's all I have for you today. I look forward to meeting you in person again when I finally find a good housing that is good for our family, as you can know, the farming, the housing market right now is a little bit difficult. So I hope to find something pretty soon and, and join you all in person in, in one of your meetings. Thank you so much. And if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, thank you, and we look forward to meeting you in person as well, Cecilia.
Cecilia, I did attend the last Extension Committee meeting, and I, I know I had missed the first part of the discussion about the three-year agreement with the University of Extension on the MOA. I know we talked about the, the price adjustments because of COVID, the DNet Extension held the line with a 0% increase, but the proposal that was agreed upon was a, a 2.25 for 2022 and '23, and then a 2.5 for 2024. I believe that. I believe that, I don't believe that that has come forward to this board for discussion. So, I know today was just an introduction day, and I appreciate that. But let's, why don't you contact Steve Larson to see about getting that on our agenda for discussion purposes? And just make sure that we are making that official.
Yeah. Thank you for that reminder. We are working on that. We just finished the budget part of the MOA, and the next step is to get in front of County Commissioners to get the final approval. So, that will be coming to you in the near, soon future here.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next, we have a special recognition. Rhonda, you want to come up and start this? And Carolyn, you want to come up and?
We should put you at the center, center stage, Carolyn.
Of course. Center stage. There we go.
Yep, Carolyn, we decided we needed to make sure that you got to sit through one more board meeting, so.
Well, thank you for that.
And that you deserved your own agenda item for today. So, thank you for coming. And thank you, Bob and Alicia, Carolyn's oldest daughter, Alicia's here, and her granddaughter, Calliope, who's sitting some patiently.
Yes, she's amazing.
So, thank you all for coming. And I just want to say on behalf of our agency, and you'll see Carolyn, lots of faces that we've kind of grown up together. When I first started at the county, I did child protection assessment work. And at that time, Carolyn and her family were licensed child foster care providers. And so, that was some of my first experiences with Carolyn in the middle of the night and on the weekends and holidays, when we would call upon her and her family to take kids that were in need and in unsafe situations. So, we've worked together for a long, a long time. As many of these ladies here were in the same situation, calling Carolyn in the middle of the night. And thank you, Carolyn, and thank your family. Because that is a family affair for sure, and we just really appreciate it. So, I'm going to speak, I'm going to kind of read something here first so I don't forget anything, and second, so I don't sit up here and just cry. I really, it's, I've been so fortunate to work with you over my career path as well. And so, I'm really going to miss you. And on behalf of our agency, what you've brought to our agency and our county has been outstanding. And I think as Commissioners here, they all know that. And that's why this is an opportunity that we wanted to provide today for you, so. As you may know, Carolyn actually was nominated for the Cass-Clay YWCA Woman of the Year this last April. And she was awarded that nomination in the youth services area, which is no surprise. Commissioner Kaylee and some others worked really hard on that nomination. And, well, we just knew it was going to happen. Carolyn, in her humbling way, thought she shouldn't even attend, but, you know. So, we knew that that was going to happen because all of her years of experience and what she's done has, just speaks for itself. So, I wanted to read just a little bit of information that we provided for that because it speaks to our work with Carolyn, and it speaks to what our agency has talked about over the years in terms of your work. Okay, so Carolyn, absolutely, well, first I'll go back. Carolyn was licensed as a foster care provider for over 20 years. And so, again, I think that speaks for her, speaks for itself. Through that work, Carolyn actually adopted three children that were placed in their home through our Child Protection Services and Children's Mental Health Services. And if that doesn't speak to unselfishness and just commitment to serving folks in need and the love and passion that someone can bring to that work, I don't know what does. So, thank you. Thank you for that. And our system and all of our services and kids that have come before and after them, thank you for that. Because without people like Carolyn and her family, we wouldn't have some of those opportunities for the kids that need that. Thank you. Carolyn has been a pillar in our community for her tireless work in supporting low-income families with children who need services and supports. She has led efforts at educating our community on adverse childhood experiences and how to serve parents and children better under this research. She coordinates our Clay County Early Childhood Initiative, Clay County Collaborative, and is Chair of our Children's Mental Health Local Advisory Council. So, we all know that these are just things that have really been so specific to Clay County. And we know that Carolyn has served on countless other community committees and has taken leadership roles in those efforts. We know that, and that's the vast experience that you bring and have brought to our county committees. So, thank you for that. Through these roles, Carolyn has worked with community partners and consumers of services to address barriers, enhance services, and advocate for those less vocal. She took the lead in implementing wraparound services and family group decision-making here in Clay County. She has been steadfast in her work to obtain crisis respite services for families and to address transportation barriers for those in need. We all know, we, every survey this darn transportation. So, thank you for your work on that. We definitely have made strides over the years, even though at times it doesn't feel like it.
Doesn't feel that way.
If anyone has a pulse on the needs of families in our community, we feel it's Carolyn. She has initiated multiple community and consumer surveys to help evaluate the effectiveness of services and identify areas needing investments. She was instrumental in organizing our community's first-ever longest table event aimed at bringing Morehead and Dilworth together to share what makes communities great and what we can do better. In addition, she has led our community's Kid Fest events for years and in making sure that families are aware of resources available to meet the challenges of parenting and for those with specialized needs. Not only does Carolyn influence our local community, but she has been a strong voice with our legislators and our State Department of Human Services. She has organized community events with policymakers, allowing voices to be heard and the ability to influence change. She is a true leader, a change agent, and an inspiration for her unwavering commitment to children and families who are less fortunate and in need of services and support. So, thank you, Carolyn. And thank you, family, for sharing your mom, your grandma, and your wife with us for all these years. It is time to allow her to give more time back to all of you. But we just really, really appreciate Carolyn, what you've brought to our agency and all the work that you've done. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. I've enjoyed working with everyone that I have had met along the way. And children and families are just a passion for mine. And so, it was, you know, wonderful to have a place where I could show that passion and make a difference, so.
So, Carolyn, you've been reporting to this board longer than I've been on this board. And I recall early on in this, you know, when I first started, I was aware of mental health issues, but not to the extent of what we know they are today. And I think it's important for people to know your advocacy for mental health and children with mental health and your advocacy for eliminating the stigma that's associated with it. Those are, we've come a long way because of those efforts, but I don't think we've come far enough. But thank you for that. I do want to read this, and we have a little something to give you here. But this certificate of appreciation is presented in grateful recognition of eight-and-a-half years of outstanding and dedicated service as Clay County Collaborative Coordinator and 24 years of serving as a member and Chair of our Children's Mental Health Local Advisory Council. Thank you, Carolyn, for your efforts, and I'm going to bring this over to you. And if you're comfortable shaking hands, I'd love to shake your hand. Otherwise, we can do a little elbow bump, whatever you're comfortable with. But congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you. I'm glad that Rhonda said we're making a difference in transportation, because I always used to tell the board I wasn't going to retire until we fixed it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would also just like to share that we're having an open house retirement celebration for Carolyn next Wednesday, June 30th, from 2:00 to 4:00. So, that's going to be at the Family Service Center. And I, well, we'll make sure that notice gets sent around. But so, the celebration will continue on Carolyn's last day. I'm not sure if we inform the board of your replacement. Do you want to do that?
Oh, yes. Jill Amuel, who works out at Reach with their prevention intervention work, will be taking my place. And so, we're actively training her on my duties, and I think she'll be great at it. She's very organized. She sees the big picture. And so, she's got not a lot of experience in children's mental health, but definitely a lot of experience with working with at-risk kids and families. So, it'll be a quick learn for her.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Carolyn, oftentimes at this board, we get the reports on the kids that have really fallen through the cracks, and it's heartbreaking. We all know that they are out there. But to have kids in this region have an advocate like you is priceless. The amount of lives that you have positively changed by just being who you are, by having the passion that you are, we're just really, really blessed to have that. And it's my hope that those people that you have touched will also make a difference in the community that they choose to put down roots in. And I believe that with faith, that that will happen. And I think that it is happening because you, I think, have continued relationships with the folks that you've helped throughout your life. And thank you so much for all that you've done for people. It's truly inspiring.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate your kind words.
We do have Amy Amundson, who's worked with Carolyn for years, who just wants to.
Yes, I just want to say she will truly be missed. She has been such a strong, especially in the Children's Services Division. She has just been such a strong advocate for parents and families and just always putting herself out there and giving them a voice. And so, we will just truly miss her. And I just want to thank her for everything she's done.
And Carolyn, you're just down the block from me as a.
Right.
As neighbors and.
I'm not going away while I'm traveling, but.
You can always, you can always walk, what is it, three or four doors down and let me know if there's things where we're falling short on, and we can keep working on it.
I can certainly do that.
Okay. Commissioner Callie.
Kaylee. Got that right sometime.
I've heard it both ways, so.
It looks like it should be Callie. It's Kaylee. Carolyn, you have just really helped shape my career in beautiful ways. And at our last ECI meeting, Carolyn asked us to go around and share what has been most beneficial for our agencies and for us professionally and for the families in the area for being a part of that Early Childhood Initiative. And she said, and stop talking about me. Talk about other things. But we couldn't because that, everybody's used the word passion, but I'm going to use the word love. I think it's Carolyn's love for children, for families, and for other professionals is so evident, and it's infectious. And it has pushed us to seek additional training. It has pushed us to identify the gaps. And so, yes, this is the best infection that we have in our area right now is Carolyn's love, and it is spreading. And so, personally, thank you. And I know that I see that work continuing in so many professionals and so many parents that have gotten training to be better parents, and that's going to carry through generations. So, a lasting impact of love in our community. Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have requests for social services. Rhonda, you're still, you're still up?
Still on.
You still on? First item is to fill vacancy for case aid position in Behavioral Health and Adult Protection Division.
Okay. Let's see. Which one do we have first? Okay, we have the adult protection one first. That is in Kirsten's unit. Okay, I did send summary sheets, three summary sheets for our positions today. I'll just introduce the first one, and then Kirsten can sure talk a little bit more about it. But we have a retirement in our Behavioral Health Division. This is a case aid position. She will be done October 1st. And so, we're fortunate enough to have some time to post and get somebody hired for this position a little bit ahead of time. So, we are just asking for the board's permission to replace that and then to backfill if there's any internal movement. Kirsten, do you want to just talk a little bit about the duties of the position?
Sure. I'll just, so Deb actually came into my office last week because I said, you know what? I can put on paper what I think you do every day, but I know it's not comprehensive of what you do every day. So, we just put some bullet points. Deb is, I don't know, she's kind of the backbone of our CD unit. She works with our chemical health assessors and scheduling all the appointments. And on paper, that looks like maybe it's not a lot, but it's a lot of time that Deb organizes, makes the phone calls. She's been referred to as the watchdog of our unit in making sure that the individuals that we are scheduling chemical health assessments for are actually Minnesota residents, which is huge when we border North Dakota. So, just some of the things she schedules, though, she works hand-in-hand with our clients in making sure that they get the appointments that they need when they need them. I mean, there's just a lot that she does that goes into that. And again, on paper, it probably doesn't look like a lot. But she's definitely needed, and she's going to be missed. And we know with our substance use reform that this position is going to change a little bit with direct access. Not everybody that used to come through our agency has to come through our agency now for chemical health assessments. And we have about another year of trying to figure out what that's going to look like. And so, this position's going to change a little bit. But I have added a few things that her replacement hopefully can do for our unit, and that's just some of the redaction that right now falls upon our social workers to do. So, I'm hoping that's something that her replacement can do, and she just hasn't had the time to do that.
So, this position helps with some of the administrative burdens of the social workers that can take off their plates so that they have more time for that direct care and services.
Okay, so your request is to fill this position as well as backfill if needed?
Correct. Yes, thank you.
Moves it through with backfill.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. All right. Your next item is position in child protection.
Yes. Okay, so this is an ongoing child protection worker that has submitted her resignation. She is going back to school full-time in the fall. Her last working day would be September 3rd. So, again, we have appreciated the notices giving us a bit of time to fill the vacancies because we have had some significant vacancies in our child protection area again. So, this position falls under Amy Amundson's ongoing child protection division, and we'd be requesting replacement of this position and backfill if there's any internal interest. However, that has typically not been the situation, unfortunately, for child protection. So, any questions for Amy or anything you want to add? questions for Amy or anything you want to add, Amy?
Not that I can think of, although it's just been really appreciated when we have been given a little bit longer notice from some of our recent resignations to have someone come on and kind of have that direct training under them. It's just been such an easier transition for our families that have to then get a new case manager. So we've really appreciated it. And I know the families that we serve have also really appreciated it.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the replacement with a backfill if needed.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion or questions? None, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. And our last one is a fill of vacancy of office support specialist.
Yes. So we have another retirement in our agency. And this person is an office support specialist in Diane Clux's unit. We are asking for replacement of this position and backfill should there be any internal interest. And this position has primarily worked in our financial services division. And Diane could speak a little bit about those duties?
Okay, so with Deb, we're losing our experience. We don't have a lot of longevity in our division. So that experience is important to us. Deb does work with the return male, breaking off a piece of the financial unit's work, and she provides support for that. There's a lot of tracking that goes along with that. And it's a first step in closing a case for when clients move out of the area. She also helps with our purge process in both our social service division and our financial services division. There's a lot of paperwork that goes along with financial services division, and she helps prep that. And then she provides a lot of coverage, both on our fifth floor, Social Services Division, and our Financial Services Division. And again, providing coverage for incoming and outgoing mail process. She can do almost any of our duties within social services. So we're losing, we're losing a lot of experience there.
Okay.
A move to fill this position with a backfill if necessary.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Abinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Okay, those...
Thank you.
...are all granted. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next, we have a, we are to consider revoking policy allowing employees to utilize up to 80 hours of sick time prior to accrual. And this was in regards to COVID. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. As you recall, back early on in the pandemic, this board took a very active stance in looking to keep our citizens and our employees safe. And one of the things that were offered early on was the ability to utilize 80 hours of sick time prior to that approval with the uncertainty specifically for new employees that may be asked to not work for up to two weeks at a time or longer because of the COVID pandemic. About a week or so after we implemented this, the federal government did implement the FERC program, which addressed that. And so as we moved away from our state of emergency, let this past board meeting, we went back and kind of relooked at all the different additional items that we may have done as a board or that you may have done as a board. And this was one of the items that came forward that we had not addressed. And so with that, I would yield for any questions.
Any questions? And we had extended that to what period of time?
We extended that through March, April.
No, we had extended it beyond March.
Through at least April of this past year, the FERC.
Okay, we discussed this at PIC and I think I'm making a motion to stop the 80 hours of sick leave.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Now we have a request to discontinue by appointment-only access to the Family Service Center. Joe, you want to come up here too? You're listed here. Steve, you can start this off. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've, this has been something that we've, as a PIC and also during our management retreat this past month, we've had some additional conversations. A majority of our, I guess, all of our other county buildings had reopened on some level that the Family Service Center was one of the only buildings that was still by appointment only. And so Joe has reached out, I think, to both our county departments and also the people who are leasing within our facility. And I don't know if you want to share some of the feedback that you received or...
Yeah, I think just we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of questions on, you know, if there's going to be a change or not. I think people are okay with going back to normal, generally what I've heard from everyone. So we're the only half.
All right. And so, you know, as we, as you know, we do have, currently have a security officer that's contracted, contacted through July 2. And that will be actually the next item that we have. But they've continued to provide some support there at the front door, at least through July 2. But the request before you this morning would be to end by appointment-only access to the Family Service Center. And with that, I'd yield for any questions.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. During the CARES Act process, we really tried to address needs within our government buildings to make sure that the flow of services weren't interrupted to citizens. And for that building, it really did make sense at the time to have a security person there to monitor flow, to make sure that people weren't just waiting outside in the cold that could come in with the appointments to have those meetings. But, you know, I struggle a little bit with continuing that contract. And the reason is this, you know, we have the Government Services Building, and there are many departments there. People often are upset when they have to pay their taxes or who have heard a building permit was denied or whatever. And so they are often angry when they go there, not unlike some of the clients that are served in the Family Service Center. I think that there's, there is a demographic of folks that are often elevated and maybe angry when they go there. I'm not sure that it makes sense for us to continue to spend the money on a security officer there. I think that where I'm going is, we did make improvements to make sure that the safety and security of departments was addressed. We changed doors and had barriers placed. And I know that it's a considerable expense, and I'm not sure it's something that I am comfortable supporting going forward, though.
I think we're going to get to that piece here in a minute. And I think this first one is the by appointment-only request. Do we want to continue that or not?
I'm sorry, I just had to ask one.
No, that's fine.
Okay, I guess what we discussed at PIC, you know, in order to get back to what we call normalcy, we have to remove that requirement. And it was decided there that we would like to remove that thing and that we, again, let people come in there as their needs are. I make a motion to do that.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I could note, one of the things that in talking with Joe, talking with the tenants, one of the things that we did during COVID was is we did have all doors to the Family Service Center locked. And we did have a main, the main east door entrance is the way that they came in. The wishes, I guess, of the tenants would be that that would continue to be the process, that people come through. The buses that come in, in the back for their programming there, staff would let them through. But as far as parents that are bringing in, they would like everybody to come through the front door. And so we would kind of limit that flow or continue that flow coming through the front east door.
Commissioner Gross.
Yeah, I got one more comment on that. You know, even though I'm making a motion to remove that, I mean, the requirement, I think we do have to keep on continuing monitoring that system to see how it works. I mean, yes, we would like to get back to normalcy. And but I think it's something we have to watch very close. If we have a problem, let's look at it again. But for now, I'd like to try to get back to normal.
So I think the request would be to, or the motion is to remove the appointment-only. But I think the recommendation is also that we stay with the one entrance. Is that correct? Is that, is that okay with your motion and your second?
Yes.
As part of that? Any, okay, do we have any further comments?
Well, just to clarify, though, there are security passes on those other doors. So staff can still...
That's correct.
...enter the other doors.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
And then for the Head Start drop-off, if a parent drops off at the normal time when the buses are dropping off, they can still drop off back there and the child can go with the rest of the bus or no?
I think it's, it's the wishes of Head Start to, the buses, majority of the kids come through bus, but the ones that have the parents, it's their wish to have them come in the east door too, in the east front door and come through that way. I think their goal is, they like that checkpoint somewhere at other schools where everything's funneled through. So they would request, a parent drop-off would come through the front door and check in with them.
And that, that's fine.
Yep.
If that's what their hope is.
Yep.
I have four children and have been in a position where you have kids in car seats in the middle of the winter, and you've got to bring them all to march them to the back of a building. I don't know if that makes a whole lot of sense. But...
Yeah.
You know, they can, they can figure that out.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Now we'll get into the, considering the extending of the security officer. And I want to start off by saying that we had an extensive discussion regarding this at PIC. And, you know, if you recall back when we, when we had our board retreat with all of our staff, I think there was, there was considerable support for continuing that. We in PIC had a variety of opinions regarding it and what is best. And I think to extend that through the end of the year, I believe the number was an additional $22,000 or something like that.
Twenty-three, one oh two.
Twenty-three thousand. And I think, I think there was an awful lot of discussion about, in the future, what, what things could be done short of having that service there, ways to, by having that one access, how we can do other things that could probably maybe lead to eliminating that. And I think the, because there was such, there seems to be quite a bit of support within that facility to continue it. Our PIC recommendation was to let it run through the course of this year, take that money out of our reserves to pay it. And in the meantime, allow us more time to look at ways where we could structurally change that area that could improve on making sure that that facility stays secure and that we have a process in place that allows access to the appropriate places by people at the appropriate time. I think that's kind of the best way to explain it. And I, that was the recommendation. I know Brian serves on PIC, if you want to add to that, but, or Darren, or Steve, or Frank. But that's kind of the recommendation that we have. And it's not as though we think that that's the long-term solution, but we think in the short term, while we figure out alternatives, that would be our best, best move. Commissioner Mojo.
Well, obviously, I just had my little spiel too early. But I think that part of the reason I'm not 100% in supporting continuing to go through with this is, is I feel that there are ways that we can empower our employees to deal with an elevated interaction with a citizen. I think there's a better way we can do that. And I don't think having someone at the front of a building is really the best way to utilize $23,000. I think that the table that I sat on during the retreat wanted more support for training for employees to deal with that. And as someone who's had to walk into the service center before I did this work, I would have seen someone standing there as quite intimidating. And there are, there are folks that, that that presence would, would be overly intimidating in a, in a capacity for which they're asking for help or some help through a situation. And so I will continue to have the stance that I won't support continuation.
Commissioner Abinger.
Yeah, I was engaged in this conversation at the retreat too. And what has worked for us in this area, you look at the Law Enforcement Center, you look at Morehead Public Service, you look at City Hall, you know, it's a secured reception. Doesn't have to be Kevlar and Plexiglas. But if somebody comes in and they're elevated, it's better to have them in a lobby talking to a civilian, somebody who can have other functions in the building, clerical, just like we have at the, at the Government Center. And have somebody who can let them in or let them out or call whoever they're there meet to come forward to them. But if they're, if they're worked up, if they're agitated, they're not in the middle of the workspace with contact with, with the employees. And you can get an officer or a deputy over there and work on it. Teaching employees to de-escalate a situation's great. Making them aware of safety and security issues. All you have to do is we've got a, we've got these issues every day in the news. But to have a, have a secured reception where you can at least have a contact with them before they're in your workspace is really desirable. And I don't think it'd be that hard to construct something. But, you know, if PIC feels like this is an expense to the end of the year, it would give us a chance at least to get something along that line planned and in budget to get it done.
Commissioner Gross.
I was a bit hesitant at the PIC committee to extend this, you know, but I guess we agreed to move forward on it. But I just don't see sometimes, you know, if I'm really concerned about doing something harmful to somebody, that the type of security we have there is going to stop him. You know, because he has no really authority to stop somebody. I mean, other than where are you going? What are you, what are you, who are you going to meet? Opening the door for him. So I'm very hesitant too, and also spend another $23,000 to keep this going, you know. If it doesn't work out, we can change it again. But right now, I'm sort of agreeing with Jenny that possibly we can spend that money some other place.
Commissioner Kaylee.
Another aspect of this that is not just safety, but also convenience. That's a confusing building. And so if you've never been in there and you walk in there for the first time, it is not immediately obvious where you are going. So having somebody at the door greet you with a smile, which our current security guard does, is, and then point you in the right direction is really nice. I was there recently... I was there recently, uh, for a meeting, which I thought was supposed to be in one room, but at the last minute was changed to a completely different floor on a part of the building that I had never been in. It would have taken me probably 10 minutes to get to the right spot and figure out where I needed to go had he not stopped me at the door with a smile and said, where are you going? Going to this meeting? Great, I just heard that they moved. And then he told me how to get where I was going. Um, so service of the smile is great too, you know, is, do we need a security guard? Do we just need a trained greeter at the door? Um, you know, these are things that we should talk about, but I think in the meantime, having somebody there at the door is a good thing until we can get something in place like Commissioner Ebinger just spoke about.
Just, I have to clarify. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Uh, the, um, person who was occupying that office space as a greeter prior to COVID, is that something that, um, we will continue going forward?
Yeah, um, I, I believe that's through experience works and, um, the one downfall is she's not there eight to four-thirty all the time. I believe it's till two every day. And so there is a little bit of a-
So there will be, continue to be-
Yes, correct.
-an individual to field questions.
Yep.
Thank you.
For many years, um, there has been a request from that building to have some sort of a security system put in place. Uh, one thing during COVID, we've learned a couple of things, and one of those things has been, uh, limiting access from, uh, all throughout the building. Uh, I think there's a significant number of our staff that still has anxiety issues or worries, um, regarding some safety issues that, that go on there. And, and during this COVID process, I think we've learned things that work, and I'm referring to the one access type of a issue. And, and there's some things that we're not totally certain of, and that's the security guard. Um, but I think in fairness to the, the number of employees that we have who, who have the concern regarding, uh, security, uh, I, I think that I'm gonna, I'm gonna support, if there's a, if there's a motion made to, to, to continue this through the end, I'm gonna support it for that reason. Um, but I, I do think that we need to, uh, really look at, uh, a more permanent solution that might entail a combination of a lot of things, including the appropriate structure system, lock and key type of thing, where you have access to. Uh, Commissioner Ebinger was involved when we designed the, the LEC and, and we have certain areas where the public is entitled to get into on a daily basis, but they can't go beyond that without having some assistance to get where they're going. I think, I think that's part of the long-term plan that we have to have for the Family Service Center as well. And there, and by the way, there isn't a, um, a guard in, uh, in front, of course, um, there's an awful lot of cops with guns right behind the doors, but, at the LEC. But, but I, I think, I, you know, I'm gonna support it. Um, I, I think it's tw- twenty-three thousand dollars. Yeah, it's a lot of money, but at the same point in time, there's an awful lot of our employees who are concerned about safety and let's get it right. And I'll leave it at that, but.
I think we, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Commissioner Ebinger.
I, I think we brought that security, whatever you wanna call it, security guard there when COVID started. You know, so now we're trying to get back to normalcy and say, well, hopefully COVID is over, but we know it's not quite over with yet, but you know, but that's why that person was brought there. So, but if we are gonna get back to normalcy, I mean, now we're gonna say COVID's still here. Is he there for the COVID reason or is he there for a security reason? And if he is there for security, I don't know how much security will be. I don't know if we need a twenty-dollar an hour person there plus additional funds there too, to tell people where to go.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, I, and I'm, I'm gonna agree with Commissioner, Commissioner Campbell. I don't want to pull everything away from the employees who are in that building, uh, but it gives us a transition time. And I would ask that we get an estimate and if it comes out of the building fund, if it comes out of, uh, general funds that we, we appropriate, but get an idea on, and it doesn't have to be fortified, but simply a structure where they, uh, somebody can be buzzed through a door, uh, reception window where they come up that they can't climb through or break out. And, uh, you know, simply have that barrier. Um, you do, the security guard, uh, option is a temporary thing. And frankly, I, you know, I agree with Commissioner Gross. This is not, um, somebody who's gonna be able to defend themselves if you've got a real problem and somebody, it's not somebody that you expect to. They're the canary in the coal mine, I guess. It's not a good position for them to be in. Whereas if we have employees and there's a, the ability to keep somebody out of the, out of the work area until law enforcement can get there, that's your optimum plan. And if we've already got an employee that's there at least part-time, let's look at staffing the front end full-time and creating a barrier. And this would give us time until the first of the year to do that. There's a, a process called SEPTED, it's Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Uh, I don't know if the Sheriff's Department has anyone trained in it, but I know the Morehead Police Department does. And that would be a good resource to, uh, to use in, in, in sitting down, just seeing what's out there in the market that would be good for us to use.
And I, I guess I'd comment too on, on, from between now and the first of the year, I think we're kind of right in the middle of our master planning of that building. We have some vacancies happening, you know, tenants and stuff trying to figure out, um, you know, what, you know, who's gonna be where permanently. And I think that's, that, through that master planning, uh, we're planning on discussing, you know, card access flow and, you know, what are the best, where do you put the money in the infrastructure so we don't put it in and then change our route? So I think it's all tying together and we're, good timing. And so it's my plan to work with Steve and, and the tenants to get a recommendations back to you guys on that as well, so.
I also look at the fact that if we're gonna supply security there, and the tenants want that, I mean, the other ten, not the county tenants, but the ones that are renting, uh, is there a rent increase required, you know, to take care of the security?
Well, we, that has been addressed, Joel.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, we've had that, we've had some tenants say that they would be willing to pay a little bit more through their lease. Currently, I guess, I'm planning on coming to the board on a, an increase anyways, uh, for just, we haven't had an increase for a long time. So the two kind of came at the same time, the suggestion of we'll pay more, but we also have a proposed increase coming to the board here shortly. So, but yeah, I have had that question of, uh, that they do willing to pay a little more, so.
Commissioner Kaylee.
Another question, Joe, in your talking with, um, tenants and, um, county people in that building. Commissioner Mojo spoke about, um, that it, it could be intimidating seeing a security guard, um, when you come in the door. And that's something I brought up when we were talking to staff at my table. I'm curious if anybody, um, has said that their clients would feel intimidated or unwelcome in the building with a uniformed security guard? Not that we would necessarily know, um, anybody that felt that way, but-
Yeah, I think the general feedback of, um, they've gotten a lot of compliments. Uh, the person there right now is really good at what he does, so that matters. Uh, we did have a couple others in the beginning before we had him, but, um, yeah, I think the general feedback, everybody likes him. So I think it really does matter on the, you know, I know the security guard look when you first come in, but he kind of, kind of takes that away and kind of, how can I help you type thing? So if that is something that is continued, that definitely is, would be something we'd have to make sure is in the job description that be kind of soft as you come in.
Service that we're looking for.
Right, service, yep. Customer service, yep.
All right. It's the board's wishes.
I'll make a motion, uh, that we, uh, appropriate the funds as identified in the agenda information sheet, uh, twenty-three thousand, one hundred and two, two dollars, twenty-eight cents to fund the, uh, out of reserves, to fund the secur- security guard through the end of the year, um, during which time we will look at building design and personnel, uh, to do a secured reception, uh, at the entrance of the building.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second that. I think, um, we need a better plan, as Commissioner Ebinger said, so I will second that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, a second by Commissioner Kaylee. And I do want to point out that our, um, our PIC committee, um, authorized or recommended authorizing that through December with the idea in mind that if, that if, if alternatives come sooner, we don't need to wait till the end of, of the year to implement those. Uh, if, if something's ready by September, uh, we can probably, uh, do that. I, I don't know how, I think there's an opt-out clause, isn't there Steve, in a, in the contract that we'd have or Joe?
Yeah, there's a-
Thirty days, I believe.
Yep.
So we have that option to, to end it early if we come up with a, an alternative plan.
Of course, you know, we say that some of our employees may feel intimidated or, not intimidated, excuse me, want some more security there and stuff like that. What about our other buildings? How about DMV where we have people come in there to struggle sometimes too, you know? Should we offer protection there? Um, I mean, where are we?
Well, I-
Are we gonna keep on?
I, I-
They are secured there.
They're, they are behind glass windows.
And that's basically what-
Same at, same at our government center.
Or you can walk right in there.
Well, you can walk in the reception area, which is what we would do, uh, at Family Service Center, but the actual employee, there's a, there's at least a barrier there that they can ret- retreat behind. And I think that's what we need to-
Just a thought.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Now, this is one, as we discuss budgets, this will be one of those things that we are approving before we approve the budget cycle.
We're not, we're not approving it for 2022.
But we're approving something that will be coming out of reserves.
Correct, that's correct.
For the effect.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same?
Aye.
All right, we have a three to two vote. That motion is approved. All right. Our next item is a report from preference or performance measurement number 2020, consider resolution of 2020 dash 26 to participate in the state performance measurement program in 2021. Darren, good morning.
Good morning. Um, on a lighter note, uh, this is, uh, something that, uh, the performance measurement program has been going on and I, uh, I think I believe, I believe it started in 2011. And each year we have supplied our information to the state auditors. Um, and what it is designed to do is to track the progress of several different measurements, uh, criteria within the county. And so I go out to each of the departments and they have, most of the time they have a, a criteria already, so it's not a lot of work. Um, it was a lot of work in 2011 and 2012 to get the report standardized, but, um, since that time, it doesn't take a lot of time to put this report together. It also requires a, a survey, which is also included in your packet. And there is a requirement to submit, uh, the 2020 information to the state by, uh, July 1st of 2021. Um, the other thing that the state requires is a resolution if the board wants to continue the program into 2021. So that report would be due July 1st of 2022. Um, it is kind of a long report. I did, I believe Colleen included the whole report in there. Um, it's also required that, uh, we post it for 90 days on our website so that it will be available to the public as well. Um, for 2020, not every county does it, it's a, it's totally optional, but for 2020, they had 25 of the 87 counties that participated. So there's not a lot of participation, but also we do get, um, money back based on our population. And in December of 2020, uh, we did get nine thousand and forty-three dollars back from the state, uh, that was put into the, um, I guess, general fund. So, um, open for questions?
When did we start this?
Uh, 2011 is the first one that I did.
There's no questions, I'll make a motion to continue the program.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Go into committee reports. Commissioner Ebinger, would you like to start today?
Uh, last Tuesday, uh, we had the Board of Appeals and Equalization, which I, all, all of us were attended and, uh, the Anheuser-Busch Molding Plant was the only item of business other than a report. Uh, and there was a, uh, a, uh, reduction in the estimated value of that property. Uh, Thursday, um, on the 17th, uh, I, I attended in person for the first time the Greater Fargo Morehead EDC. Uh, we talked about a, uh, survey that they're working on. Now, a couple interesting things came out of that. A hundred and two businesses have responded so far. They show a really high satisfaction in community services. Um, and 80% of those businesses identified expansion within the next eight months in their plan, which is very high, high, uh, level of, of engagement for expansion in our community. Um, the main thing is we all know that they identified as barriers to growth, a primary one is workforce, which is affected. We spoke, spoken of that today. On this side of the river, uh, the EDC is currently working with Bite Speed on some sales and marketing issues and expanding into the defense field. Uh, they also are working with Terricon, uh, out in Clay County, rural Clay County. They have, uh, 90 positions that they're trying to fill that have benefits and very high pay. And it is, you know, in a, in an area that doesn't have a lot of workforce around it, but the EDC is working with them and getting those positions filled. Uh, they're also talking about EDC board getting a tour of the Workforce Academy for the Morehead Public Schools. Uh, Thursday, we had the mutual aid response from North Dakota, Minnesota meeting. Uh, the letter that was sent to Governor Walz, uh, was shared, uh, by Mayor Carlson with all the border mayors, their meeting and discussing, uh, expressing similar concerns to the governor's office. We have been notified that the letter was received, but there's been no response from the governor's office regarding the, uh, the issues that we're trying to deal with and getting our mutual aid response from North Dakota to be effective again. There is a Senate file 2560 right now, which would change the police use of force statute to correct the problem, but it, uh, it's had its first reading, but it's not moving forward here in a special session. Uh, there's also a plan to speak to the North Dakota governor and North Dakota AG to see if they'll reach out to their Minnesota counterparts. Uh, later that day, uh, again, at, uh, first, an in-person meeting with Lake Ags, the Library Board, and general business and review of expenditures. And the final draft of the 2022 budget has been completed. It's gone out to, uh, the city manager. Uh, overall, the budget is, is asking for a 3.3% increase, but, uh, that will be absorbed to some degree by funds that weren't spent because of the COVID. Uh, they're asking for an increase of 1,690 dollars, um, from, uh, Clay County's, uh, part of the budget. Monday, the 21st, I virtually attended the Dancing Sky Area AG- Monday, the 21st, I virtually attended the Dancing Sky Area Agency on Aging, went over grant expenditures, no surprises on that, reviewed the 2022 funding plan. Again, the Area Agency on Aging has got some funds they didn't expend this year because of COVID, so that's going to impact on managing the 2022 budget. Looking for RFPs in several areas that are going to be delayed and extended because of anticipated fear of state government shutdown. And had a report on food distribution, vaccine distribution. And again, the issues on what emergency services they have, try and get it exempt if there is a state shutdown. Jumping around here a little bit because... Okay, we had the AMC District Four meeting, which we all attended. Had speeches from the three second vice president candidate state reports, or county reports, which our county administrator did a good job on. I had to leave early because of the diversion events we had, which would be Friday at 6:18. Diversion Authority had a special finance committee meeting, a special diversion authority board meeting for the P3 vote, and diversion authority vote for the $569 million WIFIA loan. That loan, by the way, saved us about $330 million in finance costs, and we've gone with the other routes available. The P3 was awarded to the Red River Alliance, and their bid on that was $1.14 billion. That was only slightly over the diversion authority's estimate, and it was a clear choice over the other candidate's bid. Third candidate dropped out, didn't complete the process. The votes were followed by a press conference and a reception at the Omkampst. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaylee?
Wednesday, the 16th, I attended the HSCC board meeting. They discussed that their sesquicentennial exhibit, so the 150th exhibit, is being pushed back to September 10 for the opening of that due to changes within that building. They're having to move everything from one side of the building to another, and that takes time, and they have to rework the exhibit. So September 10 is when that 150th anniversary exhibit will be opening. And they are also beginning work on a new strategic plan. Thursday, the 17th, I attended the Substance Abuse Committee meeting. Clay County will be providing signage on doors for establishments that are in Dilworth for the tobacco, flavored tobacco ban there. And Moorhead is still in process of seeking a flavor ban, potentially seeking a flavor ban. Saturday, July 10, there will be a coffee and conversation opportunity with public health so that the community can just have a conversation on vaping and the health effects and get some of their questions answered. So look for more information on that coming up soon. Also that Thursday, I attended our ECI meeting. That's the Early Childhood Initiative. The nurse home visitors gave their quarterly report. They're moving from the Healthy Families America Program to a new one called MESH, which is Maternal Early Childhood Sustained. This is a similar home visiting program, but it fits better with the public health nursing goals that they have already. So families enrolled in this program will be seen for two years. Children under two months of age will be enrolled, but if they're referred through another agency for some reason or another, children can be older at that time of enrollment. We do not have a new ECI coordinator selected yet, so Carolyn, who we, was just here and recognized for her retirement and the great work that she's done, had been the coordinator for the Early Childhood Initiative, so that position is currently open. We also discussed some of the carryover funds that we have with our Early Childhood Initiative and what we would like those to go to. Also that Thursday, I attended the CAP LP meeting. And great reports all around. One thing that I thought was interesting was there are 185 seniors receiving NAPS. And NAPS stands for the Nutrition Assistance Program. These are food commodity boxes that are distributed to area seniors once a month. So if you are a senior and you're looking for a little food assistance, contact CAP LP and they can get you connected with that program. Another interesting thing coming up in our community is there's a group work camp where 200 to 300 youth will be staying at one of our Moorhead Public Schools and camping out there. And then those youth will be involved in work projects around the community, so helping with building projects, outdoor maintenance tasks, and things that families in need and seniors need a little assistance with. So thank you to Moorhead Area Public Schools for partnering with them on that and providing the space for these kids to stay. Friday, I also attended the AMC district meeting, as reported on already, as well as the WIFIA loan signing reception. Saturday, the 19th, was our celebration of Juneteenth, our newest federal holiday, and there was a celebration at Gooseberry Park. It was the fourth annual celebration put on by the Birthing of a Diamond and Diamond Kids Organization in partnership with MSUM and the Moorhead Human Rights Commission. I spoke at that event and shared with attendees kind of what my role is as a commissioner and different ways that they can get involved in local government to work together with us to build the best community for us all. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
Once I attended, Friday was the District Four meeting, which we reported on already. Friday afternoon, I went to the diversion reception. And then Saturday, I participated in the City of Felton with their festivities for the Felton Days. That was it.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. I have two weeks of reports. I attended the Regional Extension Committee meeting that was previously reported on by Commissioner Kaylee. Just an item of note, the $500 that was needed for the new app that they were talking about, they were able to find within their existing budget. So that is live and going forward. I attended CARES, our CARES Act Committee meeting. I think we're going with CARES Act again since it's confusing the ARP. So Commissioner Campbell had reported on that last week. I attended the Red River Watershed Management Board meeting. They had an update from the Boytessou Water Quality Programming Funding Requests and talked about the US Geological Survey Contract that they had have, and then report on the Legislative Services and LIDAR. And the reason I attended that was on behalf of the Joint Red River Basin Commission Joint Board that I'm also on. I attended the CAP LP program, or CAP LP Board meeting Commissioner Kaylee reported on. Good updates from Becky. They continue to have such great programming and are continuing to respond to the needs and pulse of the community, so I appreciate that. I attended the District AMC Committee meeting. They have really gone above and beyond, I think, during COVID to make sure that counties are well-prepared to deal with the frequently changing requirements set out by the federal government and state, actually, for the different funding. So it's important to talk to the different counties on how they have utilized those funds. I appreciate that. Yesterday, sorry, I'm getting my other sheets. Yesterday, we had a finance committee meeting for the capital improvement, a subset of a capital improvement committee, really discussed items that we have really talked about at this board for a long time, about the need to make some improvements to existing infrastructure and how is the best way to do that while being financially sensitive to what our levy needs are. It was the conclusion of that board that we really discussed the, how bonding really makes sense during this time. Were able to look, as you heard from Lori as she was here, that some of those bonding payments, bond payments are falling off. So the time really makes sense to go out for bonds to fix some of the infrastructure needs. And by doing that, we won't see a net levy change because of that, because the bonds are still existing in the budget. I think it's the, we have identified that there are about $1 million in needs that will be eligible for CARES or ARP reimbursement. There's still, as you know, we have addressed and approved GMPs for our transfer station. We needed to find a way to pay for those. And I think Commissioner Campbell and I are confident that this plan really saves the tax dollars a lot of money while also addressing the needs. So I think that package is around $13 million, give or take. We will look at going for board approval at the July 6 board meeting, and then going out for bids for that with our bond agency later on in July, hopefully towards the end of the summer. We're looking at different lengths of time because the transfer station project is more dollars. I lost my notes here, but because it's more dollars, we're looking at a seven to a 10-year. We're thinking, sorry, 20-year, I apologize, 20-year on that piece. And then on the other items, seven to a 10. Looks like seven may be the most financial bang for our buck, but we'll see once we go out for bids what that all looks like. Did I cover that okay?
You did very well.
Okay, all right. So don't be surprised when that comes, but none of those items are items that we haven't seen. We've already seen those. You've talked about that at the committee, finance, or not, whatever that committee. There's so many committees, I forget the names.
Building Committee, Finance Committee.
Building Committee has already discussed about that, and we've talked about that. Then that afternoon, I also had another meeting with the CARES Act Committee. You know, this next round is really an opportunity, as we've said before, to evaluate where the needs are in the community and the county. The last one was so quick to respond to the needs. You know, I think we're taking a little bit of a different approach to it just because of that timeline. The funds need to be spent by '24, encumbered a little bit earlier than that. And as you all know, the detox facility has really been an issue where we are offering a service, a vital service, to our community. I think there's a way we can do that a lot better. There is a need for detox services. Our county attorney's office has really talked about the fact that COVID and the pandemic has really accelerated the cases and instances within the community that we're seeing. And so as a committee, we are wanting to earmark a portion, not all, but a portion of those federal funds for finding a permanent solution to the detox needs within our county, with the possibility of looking at it like a joint venture with our partners in the community, both in Clay County and across the river, and potentially with any other healthcare organizations as needed. So just don't be surprised when that conversations goes further. We did recommend that the detox planning committee that we have existing start meeting again. There is a grant out there with the state of Minnesota to possibly distribute some funds to communities that have shovel-ready plans. Two years ago, we had a shovel-ready plan. And so we're hopeful that our application is favorable, but if not, we are prepared to address that need. I think that covers that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on the American Recovers Funds. And I know Steve was asking us at that meeting kind of what we should maybe set aside as an amount early on. And it was kind of somewhat earlier, but we did establish that, you know, and this was towards the detox, and we did, you know, we did talk about maybe for right now until we get a little bit more information, we're probably looking at a potential 10 to million, $15 million project that could receive. We got an application in for a $5 million grant, which we'll know if we were successful in that in August or September. But for right now, I think, you know, we're kind of earmarked, so to speak, for that project, maybe $6 million. We did have some discussion as well regarding dispatch. And obviously, there's going to have to be something done within dispatch because that facility that they have right now, they've just, they've outgrown it, and it needs to improve. And one of our commitments is, is we want to make sure that we provide the necessary funds based on our share of that facility. But over and above that, we want to, we want to be sure that we have the appropriate number of consoles available for our needs on the Minnesota side, which will hopefully address some of the issues regarding calls and that type of thing through dispatch that we've heard from our rural community. And so right now, we're, you know, I think we kind of thought that maybe that investment with our share being what it is, we'd probably be looking at about a $1.5 million. Right now, that's kind of the number we're looking at. And again, those are just preliminary numbers. Nothing's tied to that, but that's kind of, as we look at the financial plan over the long haul, what our important expensive pieces are that we have to invest in. I will go into, on Thursday, the 17th of June, I attended the Lakes Country Service Cooperative Meeting. They're in the process now of doing a five-year planning project. They hired True North Consulting to do that. They are anticipating, we did approve the 2022 budget, and that budget projects $48,000 revenues over expenditures. And I do want to point out that Lakes Country did receive an award for their cooperative purchasing plan. And that's something that I know our county is involved to some extent in being able to do some purchasing. So that was a nice award for them to receive. Friday, the 18th, I attended a District Four meeting as well, and I do want to point out that there was a couple of items of interest. I found out, or I found that the discussion regarding the opioid lawsuit was very interesting and something that I think we need to be monitoring and following up on. I'm not so sure that a grant process for the distribution of those things will necessarily be the best. I think we need to be monitoring that with our local legislatures to talk about that. When you get into those grant settlements, or if you get into those types of settlements and there's grants involved, I can see maybe the major metropolitan area trying to eat it all up. Yeah, so I just want us to, I just want to be careful that we follow that. It was also brought up about the American Recovers dollars and townships. And I think it's important that we keep our communication level open with our Clay County townships like we did with the CARES Act to make sure that those funds are applied for and received on their part. And in the event that they can't use them, maybe we can offer assistance to them on ways to use those CARES dollars. Then that same... Then that same day, a while in Fergus Falls, we had a Prairie Lakes Budget Meeting. And just to kind of keep my report down, there's going to, there was a recommendation going before Prairie Lakes next week that in order for us to balance our budget, we'd be looking at about a 5.5% increase in the tipping fee, the price per ton. In terms of how that equates to Clay County, we'd be, that'd be overall about a $17,000 increase, I believe the number, somewhere in that area of 17,000 dollars there. But then it also will mean increased revenues for our Clay County landfill because they will be paying for our potential increased tipping fee that we're going to have, that they send all their fines to the Clay County landfill. Okay, then on the 21st, yesterday, we had a, we started off with a Finance Committee Meeting, which Commissioner Mojo talked about.
Found my notes now. Questions, I found my notes.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I think these projects, and you've seen these projects, and do you have a?
I have a copy for everyone.
Yeah, why don't you, if you can? And I guess, as Commissioner Mojo said, our recommendation is to, the Finance Committee is to come before this board on March 6th to make the request for call for bids for the bonds. We want to get that in and hopefully we can get those bond rates locked in before there's any changes that would be on the increase. But with that said, you can see the numbers there, so we're looking at the, probably looking at about a $3.1 million bond for the capital improvement project, which would, we're anticipating to be over seven years, I think will be the recommendation that will come forward. And we currently have, according to Lori, there's enough in the previous capital improvement bond that would cover probably the first year's payment on it. So when we talk about that there will be no net increase due to the levy on that portion of the bond, we can say that for one year for sure, but we can't say it going beyond. I don't know if there's other bond issues that are going to be freed up that could see that go further. But I guess kind of what the reason we're presenting this today is if there's something that you felt that our capital improvement committee has not included in there, it's now is the time to be bringing it up because, like I said, we will be requesting moving forward with the bond sale coming up. Then at 11 o'clock, we did have the CARES Meeting that was, we talked about. And that was, I think those were issues related to, the primary discussion was what are we going to do with planning for detox, dispatch and those types of things that Commissioner Mojo's talked about. And I do want to, while we're talking about it, Commissioner did, Mojo did talk a little bit about that that's going to be coming before us on July 6th. And that is the, not only will it be the call for the capital improvement, but it'd be the call for the bonding, for the transfer station. And as you recall, we, as a board, have already approved the total cost of the guaranteed maximum price of the project. And that right now is, I'm going to get my readers on here, my eye surgery didn't do that good. But we're looking at right now that we have approved 18,405,633. What we have not approved to date is the gray area. That's below that and those are the soft costs that are still going to be involved with the project. And some of them are fee-associated. And you can see that we are, we have to, we're going to have to pay for the $545,000 for the land to the city. That's got to come out of this project. And then we, there was about $1.3 million in equipment originally that we're going to, new equipment that was going to be needed for this. And we have dropped that down to 855,000 because there was three significant pieces of equipment that we felt should, it's the city's, so Morehead's responsibility. So we've engaged the city with Morehead in that and we're asking them to make those. So we were able to bring that down from 1.3 to the 855,000. But originally, in this process, there was no owner contingency in this. And from my experience with our building projects, with the law enforcement center and the correctional facility, for us not to have an owner contingency would be a real mistake. And so we are proposing then that the 500 or 3% or 552,000 would go into owner contingency. If you recall, in the, I think in the correctional facility, we ended up using most of that owner contingency, but in the law enforcement center, we didn't hardly use any of it. And so that's returned to us. So that's the hope here, that we'll have good enough plans where we won't need to use that and it can come back to us. If you would keep in mind that we also did have, in the second guaranteed maximum price that we had, there is also a construction contingency in there of $871,000. That is, that is the recommendation or what construction engineers felt they had to have. If that isn't used, and of course, even those changes that are done there, they will still go by our building committee for approval because if those dollars, even though they're in the construction contingency, if they're not used, they also come back to the county. So we're going to have a say in any potential change that would be done. So the reason that we bring this to you today is that when we go on July 6th for the bid bond, we need to, we need to obviously include the soft costs because those are going to be paid for upfront with the bond as well or financed through the bonds. With that in mind, we're probably, I think we're looking at about a, our recommendation will, so that 20,904, keep in mind, we have a $7.5 million state grant that's going to bring that down. We are making a, we will be recommending that 3.5 million come out of our solid waste reserves to buy down a portion of what would need to be bonded. And that 3.5 million has met the approval of Lori Johnson. And so we'd be looking at a bond need of about $9.8 million. And that amount is what Commissioner Mojo talked about our recommendation will be. Well, that would be a 20-year bond. And that 20-year bond, the payment on that, we're, based on a 2.5% bond rate, would be about $650,000 a year, which we've incorporated into our financial plan and we'll give you more on that. Hopefully, we can even give some more information on that on July 6th. But all of that, of course, is through the solid waste. It's an enterprise fund, so there's two ways. You can pay for it, you can pay for it through your service fees, which people see on their property tax statement, or you can do it on tipping fees. And we have a plan in place. Typically, our, what our goal is, is that the service fee that people have on their property taxes will cover capital investment and then the tipping fee will, tipping fees will deal with operations. And the operations would be both the landfill and a portion of the new transfer station. And when I say a portion of, because it's our intention to take over the, all the transportation and run that through the county, by the county. The city, I think right now, the plan will be for the city to still operate it. They will have that, that'll be their own expenditure to do the operations of it. But there are more to come on that. But anyway, that's to give you a, so we are looking at probably right around 13 million. 3.1 of it would be on a seven-year bond recommendation and the other would, the remainder would be on a 20-year bond, all in one bond sale. So we have, we don't have duplicate fees and those types of things on the bond sale. So, and then the, I think I've already addressed the American Rescue, we like to refer to it as CARES again, it's easier to say. That concludes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. On the last Tuesday, I did also attend the Board of Appeals and Equalization that you all attended. The next day, we had a STRIVE Committee Meeting where we reviewed our management retreat. We began discussing in greater detail a remote work policy based on the feedback that we received from the members and from this board. Our next meeting coming up, we are going to be, beginning to develop the framework for a telework policy based on the information that we discussed during our management retreat. On the 17th, I participated in the pre-meeting for our MCC JPA Meeting. That will be this coming Thursday. We talked about a hunting lease request, the Drayton Dam EAW, updates on negotiations of the three properties that are impacted by the southern embankment. That afternoon, participated in the mutual aid response meeting that Commissioner Ebiger has addressed. On Friday, participated in the AMC Meeting that you were all present at. It was good to see everyone in person again. And so that was, that was a lot of good information also. Yesterday, had discussions with a labor attorney. We have an arbitration that's pending with our county attorney's office. We currently have seven of nine agreements with our bargaining units through 2022. We have detox, detox this year that we'll have to address and also the attorney's office. Had a Finance Committee Discussion that's been, that's been addressed by our commissioners and also our CARES II Meeting. And yesterday afternoon, I also had conversations with Brian Milton, Troy Amundson, Sheriff Amptin. Next week, just on the piece that we've kind of touched on with the resource recovery, Kirk's going to be bringing forward that request as an agenda item for the soft costs. Generally wouldn't make any note, but the last three, three workdays, we've had some different issues with our county cell, our county phones. And so we've had some very, very, very limited outages. But just from the standpoint that it's happened now three days in a row, I wanted to make sure that we mention that for our citizens. If they have issues, please, please call back. And IT is continuing to work with our vendor to try to figure out what that issue is. And lastly, just like to acknowledge, I know the last time that she was here, we had asked her maybe to come back one more time before her final day. We've worked with the sheriff to try to get her, but she's been taking a lot of her last two Tuesdays off. And so we won't meet again prior till Julie Savat's retirement. She spent 30 years of service to Clay County and to our correctional facility. And was really instrumental in the, in the new facility and the planning along with this board. And so just wanted to make sure that we took one last opportunity to thank her for her leadership and commitment to the county over that timeframe. And would note that they are having a open house for her July 1st at the courthouse, or excuse me, at the LDC from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. So that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Steve. Just a reminder, no meeting next week and your vouchers are due to, by this Friday, I believe it is. So if you haven't got those in, you might want to do so. Anything else? Colleen, anything else? All right, we adjourned.